Tom. You want to leave us in the pledge? Let's stand for the pledge, guys. Thank you, sir. Roll call.
Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Rex Scott.
Yes.
Benny David.
Here.
Brandon Simmons.
She's here someplace.
She's here.
She's making coffee for the chairman.
Item two approval of agenda, any additions or corrections?
Will we get on there? No, I don't make the motions.
We don't need a motion. Any public comment?
On meeting.
Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Appointments for a Tom Spencer Information Technology Director. You've got three items on there. Come on up, sir. Morning, how are you?
Good.
So fantastic. Besides, I couldn't figure out the lock-in machine.
First item on the agenda is a recommendation from the Security Committee that was brought up quite a few meetings ago. All the lack of surveillance cameras in the county building. We talked about it. It was something that I told them that I think that we could do in-house. I just needed some time. We had other projects going. I might put a pencil to it and that's what you guys see before you today. This is something starting out small, but buying a larger recorder for expansion later. So this system will be capable of thirty-two cameras. None of these that I have specced right here are for outside. This is just covering our stairwells and our hallways within the county building. There's been a couple of instances where they would have been helpful to have. And the reason that sparked this was basically an incident that happened in the stairwell. I believe it was last year. And there's no video coverage in there. Got to thinking about it, putting it together. Be nice to have one in the very top right corner. I'm sure you guys probably haven't been in the stairwells, but after thinking about that, I thought that wasn't in our best interest. Because if we have one in the very top right corner, where you would monitor the stairs coming from the top level, there's a void down on the bottom where the stairwells pass each other. So I thought about having even that one that we would put up in the top right corner wasn't something I felt comfortable doing. We would have to have some contractor come in and at least run the wire bolt and the wire for us to the to the drop ceiling outside the stairwells. So after thinking about it, I got a thought, you know, I think it would be in our best interest and we could do it in-house. Still is to put two cameras in each stairwell. We would have one at the lower level and we would have one at the upper level. It would cover the void where the one stairwell goes up. That you wouldn't be able to see if there is a camera up here. So long story short, I put the prices together. I took this to the Security Committee. They were happy with it. And that's, I told them I'd bring it to the next day committee, the whole meeting for a discussion with the commissioners.
So the price that I'm looking at is eighty-five, ninety-four, fifty-five?
Correct.
And that's for the equipment?
Yes.
Is there a fee on top of that?
No, it would be done in-house. Between Chris and I, we would do it. Instead of having a contract at all. The actual equipment is seven thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. I put some contingency in there. I didn't ask Chris what we have for masonry, but some of those walls are pretty thick with locks. I'm sure we'd have to buy something. I have, I have boxes of wire. I don't know how many feet I have. I didn't actually sit down and tally up how many feet of wire I have and measure the building and figure out if I got to order a couple of boxes. Boxes of cable about a hundred bucks a piece for a thousand feet. So I might have to order a couple of boxes of wire.
Questions for Tom? Commissioner Wiltsey?
No, I mean, I think we definitely need them. We've talked about it and it's great that we can keep the labor installation in-house.
Commissioner Scott?
You show the floor and the stairwells to enough lower south entrances. Did you have four three-hundred-and-sixty-degree cameras? Where did they go?
So my thought process is, is instead of buying multiple cameras to get different areas, when you come in past the security station and you would either turn right to go up the stairs or turn left or keep going straight to go out the door, there would be a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree camera there. You go onto the hallway where you turn left to come down our corridor or go through the stairwell, there'd be a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree camera there. Upstairs directly above the two that I just explained downstairs, it would be the other two three-hundred-and-sixty-degree cameras.
Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Mahew?
Where is this money coming from?
What's the thought process there?
The only place we have at the moment is contingency.
ARPA?
You could do ARPA.
This is a, this is a building.
Creating the building.
Building improvement.
What would there, so this is for the equipment, but in order for it to be recorded or put in a cloud or like what, what, what is their cost there? Like, is this just total?
If you wanted to go with a cloud backup, there would be a reoccurring cost, but this would be recorded in-house. There is enough room on here to probably keep. I didn't actually calculate it all, but I would say at least two weeks for the video with this, with this amount of cameras.
And that's sufficient?
Yeah, I feel it as I would think. Usually we know about something the same day.
It just seems like when we first looked at this, which has been quite a few years ago, four or five, it just seems like the price was quite a bit more. Am I?
Um, I didn't, I guess I don't know what was presented to you back then or if I did it, but um, I mean, really, you're only talking eight cameras, ten cameras. So if you wanted to put them on the outside of the building, obviously there'd be some subcontracting there. That isn't something I could do. And there'd be additional cost, additional cameras, but this is just starting out to get the inside of the building covered.
I mean, I don't, eighty-five hundred dollars, this is obviously probably going to save us some liability from the incident that occurred last year. So eighty-five, a hundred dollars seems pretty cheap if in the long run it's going to save us some, some pretty big headaches.
I agree.
Just covers upstairs and the courts as well?
No, um, the court was present at the Security Committee meeting. They have their own cameras, they're non-audio, they're video only, they're viewable to dispatch, but they didn't feel that it was in our best interest to record. There are certain court proceedings that can be recorded.
So this goes all the way up to just the stairwell upstairs and then nothing else?
The hallways, but not inside the actual courtrooms.
There's not currently cameras up there in the hallways?
No.
Questions? What would be the turnaround time on this?
Probably a couple of months. I mean, I can get the equipment, everything's in stock, but I mean, I'd have to coordinate between myself and Chris.
Thoughts, guys, yes?
I'm in favor of it. This is a building improvement. This is nothing new that we haven't talked about before. When we were talking the ARPA thing, so I would take it from that. Eighty-five hundred is, ten thousand dollars is not a big hit. Hit out of that fund.
I agree. Commissioner Wiltsey?
I agree, the sooner the better. But it's the modern, you know, we wanted to upgrade the building. That'd be part of it. With that ARPA funding, that was the meaning, that's what we wanted to do, so.
Safety concern liability as well, so. I, I'm in favor as well. I, I thought the pricing a couple of years ago was quite a bit more, but I think we were looking at some different ideas. I don't think, this seems pretty simple.
I think I agree with you. I think it was a lot bigger. I think it was a lot more cameras at the time. Actually, if you look at the cost of some of those dome cameras and you look at the cost of the three-hundred-and-sixty-degree cameras, they're basically the cost of dome cameras, the cost of two cameras. Or the, I'm sorry, the three-hundred-and-sixty-degree cameras is the same as two cameras. So why run two cameras when I can get the same job done?
It rotates? Thanks, Tom. You'll put that on?
Kind of like those computers in your cars now. You can see all the way around your car.
Yeah.
Emails.
The elevator.
There would be a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree camera viewable to that elevator. No, I don't know how we do that because it moves.
I know. Well, there's lights in it.
Yeah.
There's wiring going to that.
I'd have to look at.
That would be probably a contractor, but not a bad idea.
Something that, I mean, obviously this is expandable, but yeah, I can look at that.
Well, I think. I'm going to do it, might as well cover that area too. Okay, email subscription renewal?
This is something that came before you guys last year and it's an oversight. I didn't realize that the resolution didn't actually project for the three-year, but I, when I locked, I locked in the pricing for three years on the, on the project. And then I didn't address it with Tim when he asked for the contract resolutions that go before you, that we can automatically renew the list of things that we know are coming up. And then you guys approved the list and then it's okay to do. I don't, nobody has to come back later. I didn't put it on that contract resolution list. So it came up for renewal. I think it's in May, April or May. And I got, I went back, I read the resolution. I went back, looked at the contract list and it wasn't on either one for multiple years. So it's just a formality to bring it before you to approve it. I spoke with Karen, same as last year, she's willing to chip in fifty percent of the cost.
So this is for just the renewal?
Correct.
And we did this last year, didn't we? We go through and change because there was issues with emails and we got down for a couple of days and?
Correct. We moved to the new system and this is the renewal of that new system. The pricing is locked in for three years, but it renews every year. So at the end of next year, well, next year, this will come about, we'll have the same pricing again. And then the following year off to come back because I'm sure the pricing will probably change.
So I guess what did you not do? You lost me somewhere.
There's the list of your contract resolutions that renew. Things that department heads know are coming. Get put on a list and then you guys approve that entire list. I didn't put it on that list.
Okay. So it looks like there's a cost savings here.
A little bit.
A little bit helps.
Yeah. That was a technical issue between us and Microsoft that we, we did this around this time last year and we weren't actually able to transition until June. So I addressed that with them and said, that's not right. We paid a lot of money. We lost a couple of months out of it. So they refunded fourteen hundred dollars back to us and that's on the credit this year.
So next year we'll be back to the twenty-two thousand?
Correct.
God, that sounds expensive for email.
It's more than just email though. It's Office three sixty-five, Word, Excel.
Okay. Questions for Tom? No changes to the service or anything, everything's the same. Okay. Any questions?
But is there any place else we can get funding from? The R O D account and registered deeds there, the Tim, I guess, the automation fund that's there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Just for computer stuff.
It is, but I don't think this would qualify because we're just talking about the email for the entire organization. It's not like directed.
Like five percent, five percent of the use or something like that or courts? Couldn't we tap the courts for anything?
They are already, we, this is like one line item for software that's in the general funds. It just kind of encompasses everybody. We could into in the special funds. So for instance, building inspections, we could try to figure out, you know, slicing this number up, how much that would be that came out of the building inspection fund. But there comes a point of diminishing return. Yeah. With some of those small numbers, it's just to do it out of the one fund.
Just thoughts?
Good spot. EMS, GPS gate.
So EMS called me one day. They're obviously advancing in technology with the new computer dispatch system. They are putting modems in their ambulances, the same modems that we put in the sheriff's office patrol, sheriff's patrol cars. Part of that is they want the ambulances to be visible in dispatch on their map. That's easy to do. They're buying the same modems that we have. They're, I'm not sure how they're going to configure them for their CAD and everything else, but Justin and I were talking about how the process works to get things to appear on the map at dispatch. Part of that is using the software called GPS Gate. That's what we have here. GPS Gate has a twenty-five vehicle minimum. Doesn't matter, you have twenty-four, you're getting charged for twenty-five. If you have one, you're getting charged for twenty-five. So we have fourteen vehicles here. EMS wants to put six ambulances on the map. So I told Justin, I have no problem with them transmitting through our GPS gate. So they don't have to pay the twenty-five vehicle minimum as well for six vehicles. We have a total of twenty. If we were to bring EMS on today and not charge them anything, it would actually cost us six dollars more per month. Because we're paying for twenty-five vehicles regardless. The extra cost comes in is to having Google Maps. So when I bring it up on the council, they charge us a dollar per month per vehicle to have Google Maps instead of some other mapping program. I looked, I don't, I can't see where I can opt in for anything else. I think it's just built into their software. They probably get charged, they turn it around to us. Long story short, I told Justin I would put something together and bring it before the commissioners. We could split the cost. Just because it would cost us six more dollars per month doesn't mean that they shouldn't chip in for some of the vehicles. And it would drop our cost that we pay yearly and it would save them some money as well. I just don't see the point in two different entities, regardless of it's a county organization here, paying when we can split the cost and save each other some money. Similar to what we did with West Branch City Police, where they remote in through our server to get CAD in their cars, but we bill them for that per user per year. Instead of them going out and spending a ton of money to do it themselves, we had already had it.
Questions? How's the GPS with the the sheriff's office working? Like, we haven't heard anything working well?
Yes.
All the bugs are worked out of it? It's in all of them? Questions?
I'm on the EMS board, we voted last month to approve this. It's technology that in a perfect world, we would like to have had a while ago. So it is really important, it helps save lives. I think that EMS should have to pay their share for it. We have room, we still have room for five more vehicles after this, right?
And I don't foresee any add-ons anytime soon.
Commissioner Scott?
Oh, I think it's, I think it's good. I, I'm glad to see that you're trying to find ways to save, save us money.
Commissioner Simmons?
I think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Mahew? Absolutely, especially with us being a rural area. If an ambulance driver doesn't know, I mean, there's been some conflict with some, some roads out and around oh, Lake Ogumaw out there. Two different names or roads or whatever. I mean, if you're able to pull up an ambulance and somebody can get there quicker. Yeah, it's kind of a no-brainer, this should definitely in place. What's the timeframe? Because we were a long time getting the GPS from the sheriffs. I know you did some trial and I know you tested some things out. Now, does this have anything to do with, like, you were doing some things with Iasko County as well?
So that's part of this, yeah. So instead of them, instead of them setting this up just like we did, and there was some trial and error, but we've obviously got the bugs worked out. This doesn't actually touch our network at all. It comes right from the ambulance through cell service to a server in the cloud. And then that server in the cloud transmits to Iasko County. And that's what they have here is what, what is transmitted through Iasko County. So it doesn't actually touch our network here. As far as the timeframe, I'm not sure when they're going to get their modems. But really, it's about three settings in that modem to get this to work.
Why does it go through Iasko County?
You'd have to ask dispatch. I, this is all done through them.
I don't understand it, I just.
It's, it's shared for cost savings. That, that I do know. It was multi-county, Aronak, Iasko and Ogumaw are all on the same server, CAD system.
Okay. Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
I don't think it's a great idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Randy, you're up. This was a very lengthy document.
Good morning.
And it was very, I found it very confusing.
Tim got this email to you last night?
It's on our, the B S and A, twenty-one, the twenty-one pages?
I apologize, we didn't receive a quote until four-thirty yesterday. So I emailed it, Tim, I wasn't sure if he's still here when I got it. So pretty hell of a surprise. That's why you're here. It's, you know, we, you know, having to. So some of the local units, B S and A is going to a twelve format. And, and I know we've just recently migrated to B S and A for all of our counties. Software, twenty nineteen, we did tax and assessing. And it was a pretty big cost at that time, but the dot-net platform is about fifteen years old. They're not making any improvements to it. It's, they're going to maintain it for the next five or six years. At some point, we'll have to go to a cloud-based system. And West Branch Township did this year, Ogumaw Township's doing it this coming year. And there's a it's a little more difficult to communicate between the tax and assessing systems with the townships. It just changes and, and we, we had some hiccups with West Branch Township. We didn't know there's changes. We didn't know they changed. Billy couldn't load the winter tax program and had some issues. So we, we worked through that, but I thought I'd get you this information early. We've got years to do, we've got four or five years. If it's something, and I know you've got some money left in ARPA funding for the next two years. If it's something that could be put on the schedule to, to expend an ARPA funding, I wanted to give you the information so you could consider that at this time. The, the, to migrate to the cloud system, the cost is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. The bigger sticker shock is right now, we pay about thirty thousand dollars in annual support to B S and A for all of our programs. And this affects the building department, our general ledger accounting, assessing and taxing, all, all the programs. The annual maintenance support will be seventy-seven thousand and twenty after this. So it's, it's a significant increase annually. What they're claiming is now though, that when they upgrade the system, ten years from now, there would never be any more charges to upgrade the system that they would, it would be included in that support. I, I could give you a PowerPoint if you wish to look at it. They've got, they have an estimate of how much it costs us to have a, we have a separate server for B S and A in our system. And so there's IT costs involved with that and the cost of replacing that server every year. Tom's still here. I don't think we replace our server every three years like B S and A recommends. And, and I'm not sure what those costs are. I think they're a little overstated in their proposal.
It seems like we just went through this.
We did. General ledger just.
It happened right when I got hired, because I started with a new system.
Ponem went out and they launched and, and the timing is terrible. But we had no idea what the cost was, so I wanted to at least get a proposal because it is something that in the next few years is especially as more of the local units go to it, it's, it's something that we're going to need to do. We don't have to do it today, but I wanted you to be prepared. So if, if it's something that you wanted to do earlier and utilize some ARPA funding, you've got the information. If you want to wait five or six years so you know what it's going to cost, you can kind of budget for that so that we know when we make the transition, what the costs are going to be. Kind of looking forward. And like I said, till, till yesterday, Karen and I sat through a a meeting with B S and A and we got the figures. We, we had no idea what the cost was going to be, so to, to even discuss it with you, I just wanted, I thought we should have some type of idea on the costs.
Randy, do you want to mention too, that earliest we could do it on the B S and A schedule is fall of twenty twenty-five?
Yes, this would be something we could do this year. Right now, they have a hundred and sixty-five communities in Michigan have already migrated. They've got two hundred and twenty in the works right now for this next, this year and next year. And they're, so they're, they're booked through the second quarter of twenty twenty-five. If this was something and you wanted to utilize ARPA funding, I know those funds have to be expended by twenty-six. Although in talking with Tim, you've already allocated them to budget shortfall, so you could, you could use this, use that funding and extend it out when you wanted to. It doesn't necessarily have to be fully expended by twenty twenty-six. But it would be the fall of twenty-five would be the soonest they could migrate to systems.
Questions for Randy? Commissioner Wiltsey?
This stuff's way over my head, but it's discouraging to hear these huge increase of costs coming down the road. So B S and A software, I'm sure there's other companies that are comparable to them or they?
No, they have ninety-nine percent of the municipalities in Michigan. B S and A was the only approved software for assessing. The other companies have left Michigan because they didn't have approved the assessing. So everybody migrated to B S and A for assessing and tax. Then they started migrating for general ledger. The reason we left Ponem for tax and their general ledger is they decided to quit servicing those programs for Michigan. So right now, they're about the only software provider in the state that provides everything.
So they're a monopoly?
Yes.
So how long are we good for until we actually have to react in some?
Probably six years. I would say six years because at some point they're going to quit supporting that program. They haven't given a date yet. But last year when I talked to them, they said six, seven years would be the outer limits.
They did mention in the presentation yesterday though, any new developments will be in the cloud, not in the dot-net program that we're using. So if there's any legislative changes that require changes to our formatting of report, it's going to be in the cloud and not in the program that we're using. So we're basically stuck until we switch. Not that it happened, had needs to happen today, but sometime probably in the next three years, we need to transition to the cloud to be able to continue with legislative changes that happen.
As a company, they're not investing any more money into development of dot-net.
Commissioner Scott?
I'm not surprised to hear all this. Just like we heard the whole Ponem thing about dropping support and dropping this and dropping that. Now they're going to drop this. I think instead of a knee-jerk reaction and jump at it with ARPA money, I think we ought to take a look at the budget from here on out. Build in a line. You know, we'll have to take the money for someplace else or many different places, but we'll just have to build an IT line for B S and A or all the functions of and and plan that from, from here on out.
And can departments contribute to that line as well?
Yeah, the other funds can. So for instance, you know, ready by transit fund, for instance. I mean, they're dependent on the software as much as any other department. And I think through the cost allocation plan, we can figure that out pretty easily.
I think it'll, it'll have to be just about every department.
Yeah.
We'll have to chip in something from one line to this. Because this is going to be, keep on going. I mean, five years from now, I'm going to look at, well, we're looking at annual fees right now, seventy-seven thousand. I mean, that's just only going to go up ten percent a year, easy. You know?
Yeah, I can't speak.
Well, that's annual service fees.
Yeah.
You know, everybody's annual service fees go up every year. That's why they make them annual. You know? Nobody makes them, nobody makes them ten-year plans.
It's, some of the things with technology are actually, G I S has come down in our Apex sketch. They're, they've changed the cloud systems and their annual fees are actually less than what they were. I don't anticipate.
I won't bet this one.
Ever be any less. Especially because they haven't monopolized the state of Michigan and now they're in nineteen states.
Yeah.
They're expanding throughout.
In this hundred and twenty-two, we dropped a lot more than that just to get into the whole thing. But Ponem wasn't going to back up anything, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the general ledger costs, but I know the assessing and tax is ninety thousand dollars. About that, just in twenty nineteen.
And that's a small portion because the general is a lot bigger.
And, and ahead, we realized this was on the horizon two years later. Maybe we would have never went to dot-net. But then again, we had unsupported programs. If it crashed, we'd have had to do everything manually, which would have been extremely difficult in our office.
Now, we do our payroll and account payroll through. Is that, is that included in this? Or did you only get John Ledger?
I'm not sure. Everything is through B S.
Payrolls on here. Payrolls on here.
And the payrolls program that we have.
Ledger doing here.
Is a a preferred partner with B S and A. So it, they said that actually flows through seamlessly from, is it going to be UKG or something as a new payroll? They're, they're a partner with B S and A, so their information flows freely into the general ledger for the payroll.
But we use, we use B S and A to actually run payroll. So I just want to make sure that you had payroll.
But the, the time and attendance is through UKG. And so that was, that program is, they're tied in with B S and A. So they're B S and A is a preferred Microsoft client as well. So Excel, those programs are embedded in B S and A. So you have to have Microsoft Office to utilize your programs.
Commissioner Simmons?
I agree, I agree with Mr. Scott that we don't have to jump right now. We should, when budget comes around, we should work it into our budget to have monies for this. Because once the ARPA money's gone, it's gone. This won't be the only time this stuff comes up. Because three, four years from now, something else is going to come up. And we need to be prepared for it rather than hoping we have money somewhere to pay for it. We'd like to have the money there so we know we can pay for stuff.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm just giving you the information so you.
Absolutely.
It's going to come, so you can decide how best to.
It's appreciated. It's best to be proactive. Um, I I agree, it needs to be a line item and and departments need to contribute and we need to plan for this. This is ongoing, this is uh necessary. There's, there's no other option that we have, so thanks, Randy.
Can I have one other?
Yeah, go ahead.
Captain included. I'd like to uh ask to get an intern again this year. Uh, I would need permission from the commissioners to do that. Uh, worked out well two years ago. Last year, by the time I got the permission, it was too late. School was out, I really didn't get the word out, so I didn't, wasn't able to. Get anyone that was interested as an intern.
What exactly are you looking for?
Just the permission to seek, to contact the schools and seek an intern for the summer.
Just so that I know, like, what what kind of type of student? What are you looking for? So if I come across anybody, I can direct them to you?
Uh.
Or we?
One of the things in our agreement that our legal services presented, they had to be eighteen years old in our agreement. Uh, but if we're looking at a high school junior that's gonna be senior next year, they would maybe need to be seventeen instead of eighteen. And I don't know, we could check with legal to make sure whether that would be acceptable or not. Uh, I got a young man that I've actually sent stuff to this year that graduated from Fair State last year is in. And he's interested in maybe doing a summer internship and look at, you know, getting into assessing as a career. It would give him. At least a good idea of what we do and and those types of procedures, but uh. Yeah, we'd be looking for a college student or a high school student that's looking at these types of fields.
Absolutely. I don't see, you guys agree? I think that's a gap between.
No, it's an unpaid position, fully voluntary.
Go ahead.
What are we paying now for what we have? For our software?
Yeah.
The annual support is. I think it says thirty-eight thousand. No, that's. Do you have that, Tom? The numbers that I pulled this morning with the online search. Is thirty-one thousand forty-nine dollars.
So the annual cost will be more than double.
Right. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Randy.
Hey, Blamer, Transit Director.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Ray.
Morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
As usual. Getting older.
You're looking good.
Well, thanks.
You put my glasses on. Station of all my glasses. I just, I do.
Tim um made me aware that um we had a full-time. Uh, dispatch driver that retired and per the union, we have to replace that person, so I do have someone. That we um promoted to full-time dispatch driver. But I need uh the commissioner's permission to do that. What, Tim, what was the?
Yeah, well, just to clarify, the union does not compel us to hire anybody or to fill any position. And there was, uh, as the board is aware, a paragraph in appropriations resolution that said before any position is filled. As a budget control measure, we asked the department to come in, make that request to the board before we proceed. Um, there's no doubt that uh Transit needs the position filled, has the funding to do it, but this is um uh. I don't call it permission so much, but a notification to the board that we required of everybody. And it would include Transit and that's, uh, you know, Ray making that formal visit here today uh to get that authorization.
When did this happen? When did the promotion happen?
Um, about two weeks ago.
Oh, okay, so it's fairly recent.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The person that retired, retired February first.
Okay.
And then I um posted the um position after that, after she retired.
So it was somebody that was part-time, they just went and done?
And we've been training her for almost a year. It takes a while to be a full-time dispatcher. There's just a lot more involved that they need to be aware of. And in the future, we may need another full-time dispatcher. These dispatchers, they're hard to find, and if you get one that's a good one. Sometimes you gotta give a little more money to get them to stay. That'll be with the other director that comes on board, but um it's just something to consider. And I, and I have an employee now that I think would would work out real great for that, and she did. Quit a full-time job to take this, to take a part-time dis- or driver job, so she's interested.
Questions?
I don't have a problem filling that position.
Agreed. Commissioner Wiltzy?
I'm for it.
Anything, Mr. Ray?
I I don't wanna be a stick in the mud, but I had to say no, they didn't let the cops do it. A- and it's not to, she went out, that'd be great, everything, it just. We didn't let them. That's the only thing I'm gonna say.
Our financing is a little different than the.
I understand, but it was in-house there too. They had it budgeted. But in fairness, nothing against you, nothing against her.
That's fine.
You make a valid, you make a valid point, um. But I I'm in favor of it as well. I, you have the finances, correct? Um, and this isn't an extra person, this is, so did you fill that person that got promoted? Are you filling their position?
Um, I'm kinda waiting more till spring to. See if we get some more applications in. We don't really have any good applications at this point. Um, I have one, one lady that's from Ross Common. I haven't been in contact with her in probably a month, but um. She's interested in just a driver position, not a dispatch driver.
So you didn't fill that, that previous position?
No. And I'm attempting with um this girl that I recently hired, so I have hired someone, a driver, but I'm attempting to get her trained, but. We've had a lot of people sick down there. I've been sick and um just don't have the manpower. To just put her into training at this point. She trains just a little bit at a time. She's gonna work this Saturday with a Saturday dispatcher. Get a little more grasp on what to do, but.
Overall.
Some time.
Overall staffing, you're pretty, pretty well-staffed. You still running on Saturdays?
Could probably use two more. The uh the one gentleman that's off on um FM LA, I don't know if he'll even come back. But there's, there's no way to know that either, so.
Still running on Saturdays?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And with this. Losing this dis- part-time dispatcher to full-time, that's, that's hurt the Saturdays. The, we only have one other dispatcher at this point. I. At one time, I have six dispatchers and I just can't keep them. They just keep leaving, so, or retiring. And when I, when I, you know, ask um. The employees that work for me now, none of them want to dispatch. They just don't wanna do it. It's a, it's a, it's a difficult job. It really is. You're dealing with the public every day, a couple hundred calls every single day.
And they're not always nice calls.
No, yep. So.
Question?
Do you, do you have any other questions or?
Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
No, thank you, Tim. Definitely support that uh the recommendation.
And then you also have Celebrate Ogumai Advertising Agreement. On the agenda, did you wanna give us an update on that? I I seen the contract.
Um, they have been, they have been putting the um, the uh advertisements on the buses, so I'm. I hope that it, it goes through. It's, it's not gonna cost us anything.
Right, but if I read this correctly, for the license fee, the license shall pay Transit forty percent of all existing advertising revenues for a license fee for ads sold. Before the contract, and then the licensee shall retain a hundred percent of all new advertising revenue generated during the three years of this contract.
Three years, yeah. But all, all of these ads that he's putting on these buses, he's not generating any income from those. This, this would be if. Um, he generates other. Other entities to advertise on our buses. He would get that, the full hundred percent of that money for three years.
Go ahead, Commissioner, you two are on the, go ahead.
So um, we understood your guys' concerns when this topic got brought up, so we asked Kirk, who's the owner of. Dynamic Bus Ad and Gaylord to come to our meeting, so he came to our meeting last month. Uh, went over everything with us. Um, he said that some of the things should have been explained a little bit differently. But like the existing ads that we had before this whole new program came about. Um, as long as they stay with that ad, the uh Transit will remain receiving that income.
Yep.
But if they change the ad, then of course the Transit won't, but. No, we definitely did as a board, we all talked about it. Um, you know, the fact that, you know, the hundred percent compensation, you know. Was, was alarming at first, but you know, Kirk really explains it really well. Um, you know, his work is very, very professional. I don't know if you guys have seen any of the stuff yet. Um, and I still ultimately feel that this could open uh some new doors for the Transit. I think it could. Help increase our, our riders. Um, so I think there's a lot of other items that will get out of it. And then again, we do the radio advertising, um, you know, that will also help, so.
How much uh, the Transit has been receiving forty percent up till this contract, correct? How much money has that been?
Oh, well, well, it varies, but for the last year and a half, maybe two years, it's been. Three hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
A month.
A month.
A month, yeah, per month.
It's under five thousand a year.
Yeah.
Talked about that at the committee.
And those are really, they've been the same three ads that have been, they just keep renewing. Month after month after month and and uh.
So the person is paying for the ad to be on the Transit, the three hundred ninety-three or the total, whatever that total is.
Those people are, all of the, all of these ads that he's put on the buses now and is going to put on the buses. Today, tomorrow and Saturday, and I think he'll be done with it for a while. He's not receiving any money for any of those ads. It's for, it's for the, the community. It's for Ogumai County. So he is evidently. Paying it all upfront, hoping that he's going to, to get some ads in the future to reimburse himself for it.
Right. He, he's, he, he has all the cost right now.
Right.
And it does not cost us.
All the, all of these ads that he's putting on these buses, except for the three that have, that have been on our buses, he's not receiving any money for them.
Well, that's not true then. Be, and again, I'm in favor of this. I just wanna make sure I understand it clearly before I make this decision. If the, if the Transit's getting three hundred ninety-three dollars per month and we're only getting forty percent. He's getting the other percentage, so, so, right, so that's not tru- if we're getting three ninety-three a month, he's getting the other sixty percent. So he is getting an income. That's, that statement's not true.
The only thing is that's, it's not apples for apples, so that would be like the first. That's been in play with the Transit for quite some time. So that's gonna stay the same. This is.
Right, I understand that, but making the statement that he's not making an income is not a correct statement.
I think, right, you're, you're right, but what we're talking about is this new campaign that we have in front of us.
So, moving for, I'm sorry, moving forward. So uh I just, again, I just wanna make sure I understand this clearly. I am in favor of it. I, I believe. I just wanna make sure I got a grasp of it. Whoever chooses to put a rap on the uh Transit is not gonna have to pay any monthly fee.
They will to him.
Right, so that statement is not true that he's not making, he's putting it on there and then he's gonna get the monthly cost, the monthly.
But the ads that he's putting on now, he's not charging these people for any of these ads.
They're gonna give him a monthly fee?
No, they're not. They're not paying anything for that. They're not paying anything for that. This would be in the future, if someone sees all, because every bus is gonna have something on it.
Okay.
If people see this and they call him or call the Transit, I tell them who, who does these ads. They call him and they work out a deal with him to put, put an ad on the bus, then he would make money from that ad. But he's not gonna make any money from all of these ads he's put on, and I don't have a list of all of those ads, but there was.
I got one more.
So the ones that are currently on there, they're gonna have to stop paying this fee or we're?
No, no, the three, the, the, the three that have been, that have been advertising on their buses for a couple of years. We're gonna continue to get that revenue as long as they keep on running the ad.
And so is he.
Yes.
So again, the statement that you just said, that, that is not, is not registered. He's not gonna make any more money on it, but he's gonna continue making the same amount of money.
Right, and but the, but these are existing ads. These are ads before.
That's continuing the same.
Before he has done this promotion.
Yep.
And he won't get any money for those ads.
No, that's, that's what I'm trying to.
He's still getting the sixty percent. That's not true. He's still getting the sixty percent. He's just not changing that. Tim, am I, am I wrong there?
No, I, it's the, the math works out. So, yeah, I mean, he's getting some revenue.
So the previous contract, he's not changing. He's still gonna get the sixty percent. We're gonna get the forty. So that statement is not true. Am I, am I not understanding this?
Yeah, I think you clarified it myself, but.
Can I add?
Go ahead.
But again, we're, we're talking about two separate, almost you can say like entities. When Ray says. He's not getting paid anything right now, so this is like a pilot thing he's doing. It's kind, it's pretty much new to his business. And obviously, it's a private business, so he's doing this to eventually make money. I mean, he has to make money. The raps that he's done so far for this campaign, he is receiving zero income. He's using that as a marketing tool for his business. That people start seeing it, like, oh, I wanna be on there, and then they're gonna come to him through this campaign, through this new three-year. Um, program that we're doing, and then if they, they get on board, then yes, that compensation. To him, to Kirk, to his business is one hundred percent.
So any, a- again, I just, I, I don't agree with this. I understand what you're saying, but so any new raps that go on. Any who, anybody who chooses to put an advertisement on there. For what you just said, is not gonna have to pay anything. That's not factual. Whatever they have to pay is going to go to him.
Yes, yes.
So what you just said, he is going to be making money on, and I don't have a problem with. I just wanna make sure. No, you didn't. You, I guess maybe I misunderstood you. What you said was that he's gonna be making no money on it. He's hoping to get business from it.
From, from the new, from the new businesses.
So all these raps that he's putting on the buses now, he's not going to make any revenue from them. He's doing that basically for free.
That, that's not, so the person that's putting that rap on is not paying a fee?
That's right. All, all of, all of these raps, all of these raps that he's doing.
You're not getting a fee to put it on, but he's gonna get a monthly fee for, for doing it from the.
Oh.
No.
Maybe I can add some clarity to it, and I'm going from memory from the committee meeting when he was explaining this. The rap goes on, it's advertising the fair. And it's got the dates on it and so on. What I remember Kirk telling us was, there are places for up to, I think he said, seven ads that could go along the bottom of the announcement of the fair. And that's where he would make his, his uh revenue. To do this for free. Uh, for the cost that it is, what, fifteen thousand dollars or something like that? That's a very poor business model, because you won't make anything. But what I think he's hoping to do is offset his costs by selling those seven ads that would go along the bottom. It would be, you know. For maybe a bank, maybe a restaurant, whatever. But his belief is, when these buses are traveling throughout the community and businesses see that, and they'll wanna say, how can I get a piece of it? And say, well, I've got a deal for you, you know, for a, a small fee, you can have this ad placed when the fair announcement is made. So that is my understanding, where he intends to, to get his, you know, his investment to pay off for, for his business. The ads that Ray is talking about, the three are already there. I, I mean, I don't know how long, I mean, that's this completely, you know, up to the business's decision how long they would wanna do that. Would they wanna be part of the. Um, the, the fair, you know, banner, does he, do they wanna be separate? I don't know, but that's something that they'll handle. So ultimately, um, his plan would be not to lose money on this, but to sell enough of those ads that would go along the bottom to offset his costs. I'm sure, make a profit, you know, I mean, it's a for-profit business, but that's my understanding how it can go, so to, to say he's. Not going to make anything, he is taking a risk. I mean, there's a potential that nobody will wanna put ads on there and. Off he goes, I don't think that's what the, what the result will be. I think he'll be able to sell those ads. Yeah, I don't think anybody's in business to lose money, so I think, you know, I think that's fair to say. He does have a plan to recoup those costs, and I'm sure, again, at a profit.
But the, but the rats he's putting on right now come out of his own pocket.
Right, so any of those entities, gosh, you think there were like five different events that, that we saw?
Oh, there, there's more than that.
None of them, none of them are, are being asked to, to pitch in anything. The hope is, by putting those on the buses, though, the word that the fair is out there will attract business. Will attract people who want to put more ads on the bus.
So the, like I said, it's a marketing tool.
And this is just an initial thing. Next, next year probably, what, if, if the fair wants to put an ad on there, they probably had to pay for the new ad, because it's gotta change, because the dates will change. You know?
So the ones that you're saying are no cost are on here, though, Celebrate Ogumai Promotion, them are the ones that are no cost, which. So the ones that you're saying are no cost are on here though, celebrate Ogumah promotion. Them are the ones that are no cost, which is primarily based in Ogumah.
Yes.
But again, I, I understand what you guys are saying, but the, the, over and over again, them are the ones that are just free. The other ones from businesses are not free.
And I would think that the ones he's putting on now would be for. Contracting with them, a free like that would have to be of a contract between him and his customers. For how long those ads would be on there? They can't be on there indefinitely.
So right now, there's a monthly cost for these, um, these advertisements. Was there, I guess, do we know if there was an initial cost for them to be wrapped on there? For whatever's on there now. I know there's a monthly cost. We're getting the three ninety-three. But is, was there an initial cost to have that?
To the, to the transit? No.
No, to, uh, the business.
I'm sure there was.
We don't know?
Okay, on there for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know.
Still, Ray was here then. Hi, you don't know? Okay. Mike, did you have something to add? Somebody was raising their hand.
I, I was, uh, Tim clarified what I was gonna add and. I'm working with him, with the Aranat County Transit, doing the exact same thing. In fact, they're the only two counties he's offering this, this program to. And it's about bringing transit into, into the county community and. Making transit more of the community. And then him trying to make his money off of some ads, raps that he's put on, celebrating the, the, the community, so.
I guess one more.
Go ahead.
So another thing he's gonna use it as a marketing tool, no charge to the schools. He did this in another county and I guess, I think it was up in Alpena, he was saying.
If that's where it was.
I guess it's just been huge. The talk, the people are loving it is, he went to, I believe it was Alpena High School. And, um, you know, has to get the permission, of course, from the parents and everything like that, but. There's actually, um, high school students like valedictorians, salutatorians, you know, people that are going above and beyond for their age level. And he's using them with their school mascot. So like for, for our county, he's gonna go to Ogumah Heights and to Whitmore Prescott. And do the same thing if they wanna be a part of it, and it would be no cost. It would be, again, he's doing it kinda like these, these other Rife River Rack for the Victorian Art Fair, you know, using them as just a tool. To market this campaign, to sell those additional small ads where he's actually gonna make compensation.
I think it was last year, I think they did do valedictorian and salutatorian. I think I remember seeing that on a transit in Ogumah County. I'm pretty sure I did. Again, I don't disagree with this. I just wanted to make sure that, that it was clear. I, I didn't agree with the statement that for him to do these things are no cost, but. There, there is a cost with things that will be added to this.
Right.
And adjacent to this.
But he will get a hundred percent of for three years.
Three years?
Well, the whole contract lasts for three years. So if, if they, next year, if he sells a couple ads, he will get that for the. For the balance of the three years, the way I understand it.
Commissioner Scott, did you have anything?
No, nothing.
Mr. Mayhew?
Nope, I got it.
Anything else, guys? Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Mike Bowers.
Morning, how are you guys?
Good morning.
One of these days I'm gonna learn to not stick my notes where it doesn't belong. So I am here this morning, uh, for a few things. First of all, uh, uh, one of my requests was, uh, to fund, uh, conference registration fees for. Pete Paxton. Um, on Monday, I found funding for that through EMHSD, State of Michigan. So I'm. Calling back that, uh, that request. I do not need that request. The big request on hand is, uh, for electronic signs. These are portable signs. They're LED signs, uh, very similar to, uh, the State of Michigan signs that they have on trailers. Uh, where they program them to, you know, the road closure is gonna happen, all of that, except they're a little bit smaller. They're about three by five, uh, when they're set up. And I have, uh, I'm purchasing them so they can either be freestanding. Or hitched to the back of a vehicle, um, and, and the vehicle parked there. And they're for temporary, uh, redirection of traffic. We have example, uh, when, uh, uh, the fruit market, uh, we had to reroute traffic. We had six or eight officers out there rerouting traffic. Where we could have just put a couple signs out and rerouted traffic. In fact, we could have rerouted them much safer than the. The manner that we did because, uh, you know, it was so impromptu. So, so that's, uh, just one example, uh, uh, if, uh, the police need to close off an area, reroute traffic. Uh, we have a flooded area, um, again, reroute traffic or move them over to a different lane. Uh, these types of things. It can also be used, uh, for, uh, staging areas, uh, during, uh. Uh, during events, um, uh, where we can, we can, you know, no admins, uh, uh. Staging staff only and, you know, and direct them in. I had a situation in the middle of the woods. Uh, where you went down and you didn't know which way to go. We eventually wrote a paper sign and stuck it on a tree. To tell people the incident command was this way, uh, the, you know, so, so there's a lot of good uses for it. We do have a couple of these signs in the regional community. Uh, we definitely have a need for more signs in the regional community. There was a mistype. I, uh, left out an eight in that. It's not two thousand. Uh, nine hundred and sixty dollars. It's twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Twenty-nine thousand?
Twenty-nine thousand.
It's a hundred percent reimbursed.
Oh, no, I missed the eight.
Yeah, the eight and the comma.
Yeah, yes, yes. I put the.
So they're ten thousand dollars apiece?
Yes, they are. They are. These are, these are.
Well, I'm glad you're getting reimbursed.
So, so, and this is, this is a hundred percent reimbursement. Ninety to, ninety to a hundred and twenty days. And I ended up doing, uh, this grant and worked on this grant because. We came to the end of the grant cycle and the regional EM board is required to put. X amount of dollars into each category that's mandated by FEMA. And in the community response category, we were thirty thousand dollars short in our spending. So I picked up this grant and said, you know, this is.
You're short on spending?
I spend, you have no idea how much more grant money I spend. From that regional board than anybody else.
Well, that's great, but if it's reimbursed.
I am.
Spend as much as you can.
Between the four counties, I usually have anywhere from six to eight grants working at any given time, twelve months out of the year, so. Bringing money into their, into the counties, I estimated.
Go ahead.
It's been about five hundred thousand dollars in the last four years that I brought into the, to the counties and.
Yeah, I, I know you have. I really thought this was a heck of a deal, a thousand dollars. Start buying some more of them. But at ten thousand dollars, where are they gonna go? Because I wanna see a ten thousand dollar sign used. I don't want it sitting in some trunk of a car that it just never comes out.
My, my thought was we will keep one in the cert trailer. Or we will ask Rose City Fire to keep it. So, so it's in the north corner of the county. I want to, uh, have one housed at the Sheriff's Department. And I wanna have one housed down in the Mills Township area, either with the township or with the fire department EMS. Uh, EMS fire department is the most likely. Uh, that way we don't have to involve the township in order to get it out and programmed. Uh, the programming is very simple programming. We can teach anybody to do it. You can do it remotely from your phone. Somebody can set it up. Here in West Branch can call me and say, hey, I need you to put this on the sign. I can sit there in my living room with my phone and put that on the phone.
Oh, nice. Absolutely, I.
I, I, I think it's a, uh, it's a resilience, a resiliency thing. And yes, I want to see them being used. Uh, you know, I am increasing our exercises, uh, our. Uh, the exercises and the practices and the things that we do. These signs will be part of that. I have already started using the, the access that I have, otherwise these types of signs in other exercises and.
I would recommend talking with the road commission about it, because they're the ones on the road all the time.
Absolutely, we can.
And they come out for emergencies too.
That's a great place also, absolutely. Making sure that they know they're available for them.
I just saw the news, uh, last night that, uh, motorists hit, hit a Roscommon County. Road commission truck sitting on the side of the road and holding a sign.
Exactly.
About got him. It just totaled that pickup right out.
Yeah, e- e- exactly. It puts our, it puts our people out of harm's.
Well, this saves on manpower as well, so very much, it's kind of a no brainer. But thank you, thank you very.
Reimbursed by them.
Absolutely.
So, um, speaking of the road commission, uh, at the, uh, fire chiefs meeting, uh, week, two weeks ago, somewhere's in there. Uh, it got brought to the attention. Back in two thousand and nine. Ogumah County threw homeless security grants, had gotten a thirty thousand, uh, kilowatt generator on a trailer. And that trailer is actually housed at Ogumah Fire. Until two weeks ago, I didn't know we had it at all. So, uh, so, well, three emergency managers away from there. And Carol Adair back, just before she left, uh, had told Brett Banning. You should go over to such and such location, bring it to your fire department so it doesn't get lost in shovels, you know, to come. So people know that we own it. Anyhow, Brent brought it to my attention at the last fire meeting that he has it housed. At his fire department, he'd probably like to get it out of his fire department, uh, you know, so he can use the space in, in, in his garage. And my thought was, uh, the road commission, uh, will be a great location for it. And Brent and I are going to down, go down to the Committee on Aging. And we're gonna take a look at their building. Thirty thousand kilowatt generator will not. Power the entire building, or we don't think it will. Uh, we think the building is too large for that, but. We would probably be able to power the community area as a shelter. It would be the largest shelter capabilities we have in the county. Currently, the other two that are sheltering, uh, capabilities we have in the county are the KOC Hall. And the rec center over on industrial. So they're the two largest we have in the county right now. Um, and Commission on Aging, and I don't believe either of them have generators. So, yeah, the Commission on Aging is ours. And, uh, Brent's gonna look at what it will take in order to be able to just. Drive it the quarter mile down the road, uh, from the road commission. Plug it into the building and have it up and running, uh, for a shelter if and when we need it. So, so that's, I'm just letting you guys know. We've had the discussion before about the Commission on Aging. You guys really wanna see a generator. I'm not gonna be able to get a fifty or sixty thousand dollar permanent generator through my grant programs. At least not in the foreseeable future. And this just kinda sort of, you know. Puts a Band-Aid on this. Band-Aid on it. At least we'll have that much, so.
Perfect, thank you.
And, oh, one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
So, so, uh, the, uh, cert incident command trailer, we are in the last stages of building that. The, uh, um, components portion, uh, that the cert team is actually going into a fly and. And things to build with. There's seventy-one components to it. So, uh. We started off, uh, with a, um, hardware stores in order to get this in. And it's a wide variety of things, uh, that are needed in order to complete this bill. Anyhow, in order to follow the grant program rules. We ended up having to go online and solicit hardware type online companies in order to, to, to get this accomplished. Previous to that, Menards down in Bay City was the only place we could find that had all of the components, uh, uh. Ace West Branch did not, Ace in Rose City did not. Um, they only had parts of it. So, uh, we ended actually going online and, lo and behold, uh. Walmart is actually the company that had all of the parts and the best price. We started off at, uh, uh. Four thousand eight hundred dollars and now we're looking at spending three thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for this purchase. But the purchase has to be made with credit card. And I spoke with Karen last week and she said that, uh, I needed to come to you and ask you to raise a limit, at least temporarily on. Tim's card, so Tim and I can make this purchase, uh, to complete that. And again, this is all part of a hundred percent reimbursed. That, uh, we're already in the middle of it.
What do you need the card raised to?
Uh, over three thousand five hundred forty-five eighty-six.
I don't have a problem with that. For a one-time purchase?
One time.
One-time purchase.
Problem with that either. Yeah, I know, I worked with Mike and Pete on a lot of these items. And this trailer is gonna be, I mean, state of the art. Do you have a critical incident?
It is so much, it is so much more than my mind ever saw it when I started trying to put this together two years ago. So, um, I'm looking at May, having it a hundred percent completed and having it here to show off to everybody.
Oh, right.
And we'll, we'll set it up completely, generator tables, the, the whole nine yards, pull the, pull the hauntings out and. Really show you its capabilities. All the radios will be installed in it at that time.
Thanks.
Really exciting.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you all.
Have a good day.
I will. You all too.
Discussion items, late bid for wash fat.
You might remember a couple meetings ago, I mentioned that we got two bids in for the wash, but I'll get, uh. Transit, uh, going in the new building. One of those bids came in roughly three hours after the eleven o'clock deadline. Uh, through no fault of the, of the bidder, they, um, just FedEx got it here, uh, late. And, um, the bids are due to be opened at the next transit committee meeting, but, uh, if you are. Uh, agreeable, we'll, we'll include that bid. If not, we won't include it. We'll just leave it unsealed and. Send it back. I think it's what the instructions say. Uh, I would suggest accepting it, waiving that, uh, time. It's, it's just two bids that have come in, so I think we should really benefit from seeing, you know, competitive bid.
Absolutely. It's postmarked date correctly?
Yeah, postmark is, and timing, it's just the day was right. They just got there after eleven.
You guys agree?
Yeah.
Inmate fee for Ascotin inmates?
I added late yesterday, uh, uh, email from Paul, uh, talking about, uh. The inmate fee, and this is the twenty dollars on top of what I see from Ascotin County. Uh, for the inmate housing contract. Uh, the attorneys did, uh, agree that this was a fee that the county could certainly charge. And so the intent is to begin that process. I think they might have already started it, if I remember the, the email correctly. So this is just a follow-up from prior discussions, so that, that is, I believe, in place. We'll get more probably at Law Enforcement after this meeting.
So the twenty dollars, I, I read through this email a little bit, was confusing. The twenty dollars is being charged. Back to Ascotin County or to the Ascotin County inmate?
To the inmate.
So how is that gonna be collected? Same, do we know? What's the process?
I don't know, they just send out an invoice or exactly how that works, but, um, it's, you know, it's a. It's not four and two corrections. They've done this before, so they've got a system. And there's, well, again, at Law Enforcement, we'll get into some of the details. And this is actually a form that's required by statute. Um, that they, they use to notify the inmate. And one of the questions I'll have for the sheriff is to make sure we're using that form. Uh, because that would be something that would kill the program immediately if we weren't. So it sounds like it's pretty well structured, both in statute and based on prior, uh, processes at the jail.
Questions?
No, this is great. I mean, we've been looking into every option possible to try to create more revenue for the jail. Kind of makes you wonder why this wasn't in place a long, long time ago, but the bottom line is, we're here now. We're moving in the right direction with it. I'm glad to see that, uh, attorneys came back, that we can also charge the auto, auto county residents as well.
Mr. Scott?
Oh, I agree with Charlie.
Mr. Simmons?
I agree.
Mr. Mayhew? This related to the Ascotin County inmates are getting charged. The, we, there was an email on here, yeah, that, that we got quite late yesterday from, uh. Uh, the undershare. The, uh, Ascotin inmates are gonna be charged, just like Ogumah County inmates, the next, the twenty dollars a day to the inmate, not to Ascotin County. So on top of the thirty-two dollars, my rate, I figure the thirty-two dollars, I believe is what I seen, thirty-two dollars that goes to Ascotin County. Or that they pay us.
Right.
Excuse me, per inmate, we're charging Ascotin inmates another twenty dollars a day, just like we are now. Excuse me, per inmate. We're charging Ascot inmates another twenty dollars a day, just like we are now Ogumah County. That's fairly new that we've initiated.
Okay. And it's not considered double difference because the cost to keep an inmate there is sixty-seven dollars a day.
Right.
And we saw, we're still not covering total cost.
Right.
Yeah, according to our audit for this year, it's sixty-seven oh six per inmate, average of eighty-eight minutes. So, okay. Did you need a resolution for that?
This was just an update.
Perfect. Item five C, solar slash wind resolution.
This is a follow-up to conversation at the last board meeting. We had several counties send us the resolutions. Uh supporting the grassroots effort to overturn Public Act two thirty-three, and that's the one that uh the state uh seized control of citing and. Um. Well, primarily citing of the renewable energy and energy storage projects in the state. Um I did take a look at those resolutions were all slightly different, so I tried to grab the ideas from all of them. Um. The proposed one that I put out here doesn't have near as many words to it, but it's um, you know, hits the crux of it. And there was a. Supreme Court decision back in nineteen twenty-six that allowed zoning that gets right to the heart of this about local control. Um and again, just the 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 request here being of the. Uh well, the result portion, just in support of the statewide valid initiative to return that local control. Both the counties and townships, uh a little bit cities and villages, but have so much of an issue. Uh because there's some of them much smaller, but um uh particularly like our county, if we get a. You know, four hundred acre solar farm, it would be really good to have locals have some say in into that process.
Something's not next to my house.
As long as it's not next to Commissioner Simmons, it would be fine, right?
Uh, Mr. Simmons, you're taking the lead on this, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to go ahead? Were you done, Tim? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm it's just.
Okay, um there there is an organization that started down below and um. They're passing petitions around like this to be signed by residents of the state of Michigan. To give authority back to the local governments. For where solar and wind wind turbines uh can be put. In other words, our ordinances would still be in effect. Uh. If Michigan says they can go in such such a place and it's against our ordinance, we have no say. So Michigan just override our ordinances. And what we want to do is get this put back. Uh to local control. And by doing these petitions, we need three hundred some thousand signatures. Uh to get this on the ballot for November. So that's what this is all about. If anybody wants to help, get the petition signed. I won't turn down any help.
Yes.
So Brenda, you're kind of like the captain.
No, Mr. Uh. Uh. Dolehanny is Jim Dolehanny is. And he's on vacation right now. Uh he'll be back next week, I think.
Sue's husband?
Huh?
Sue's husband?
Yeah, it says him and his wife, yes.
Sue from the E T C. She used to be a general. She's still in there.
So, yeah, so um. I found out he was captain. That was fine, because I was called by um one of the guys just putting this together. To see if if I would haunt you with, and then Jim Jim Dolehanny did it to him, because he talked. To to the guy that was ahead of this guy. So there's two launches of this. And uh I immediately called uh I Ascot County, Ascot County. And Alcona County, and they're initiating this also. And they've got someone in charge in each one of those counties, by understanding, to get these petitions passed out in their counties. But and we have to have it back to us by May tenth. So we can check the signatures and get them back to uh the organization so we can get this on the ballot. And it says right on the back of the petition what it's all about. Uh. Initiate legis- legislation to amend what the state did. And uh would allow uh an act of this proposal would allow local units of government to determine their own standards. For such facilities. And right now, the state has taken that away from us. And the state is going after more things. They want to take away from us too. So we need to start jumping on this right away before we lose all of our rights.
I I brought it up at my townships this week and and there's, I will take as many of them as you can get to me, because there's a lot of people that sounds like they're interested. And last night I was actually at Logan Township and Consumers was there. And it's interesting, they have a lot of the static to us from your house. They have fifteen hundred acres. Um but. I'm getting there.
Okay.
That two individuals have uh signed contracts with uh. Rich was there from Consumers and they are going to move forward with or attempting to move forward with. That is across from my house. That is running from Beach Road to Jillian's Road. Um they have fifteen hundred acres that they need. Eight hundred are actually required. Um. He was pretty transparent about it. Uh with it is. Uh they would like to go through the county, but uh if not, they are willing and and able to go through the state at this point in time, so. Uh this is right uh right on fifty-five. Um just so everybody's aware, they uh. Were very open about it last night. So that is one that is going in Logan or they're planning on in Logan Township. So fifteen hundred acres is a lot of farmland, a lot of farmland. Um. There were some pretty, pretty good questions that were asked last night by the residents there. You know, what happens afterwards? Um some fire equipment, you know, I apparently there has to be some some special equipment, some a lot of training. Um you know, who's gonna call, who's gonna pay for these costs? Uh the cleanup afterwards. Um I'm just trying to think of some valid questions that were asked. Um I don't think a lot of the residents were anticipating that last night, so they didn't. They they weren't prepared for it, I guess, so they didn't have a lot of questions, but um I definitely would like some of those.
So make sure if I've had somebody sign this from Midland County, so I had to put Midland County on his, so he could sign it. Just make sure the right county is up here. Make sure they're registered voter. I already put Ogumah on the first one for you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, man. Any anything else?
If anybody needs any, don't hesitate to call me.
I read.
I'm one person. I can't do it by myself.
Absolutely.
Right.
I appreciate this, Brenda, very much.
Yeah, I have something to add.
Um, oh, go ahead.
Um, so it actually was brought to my attention last week, and I wasn't aware of this. It was kind of disheartening to hear, but it also the sign. When people come into an area and can throw some money at you. Uh at the road commission last Wednesday morning at their meeting, we had two individuals. They were from out of the country. I think they might have been from South America, and they're working. For a solar company. So they were trying to get, they needed to get some type of autograph from Pat and the road commissioners. In order to start the conversation to tie into the grid. Anyways, um. I was not aware that our county has over five thousand acres already. Into solar or wind, where farmers have. Over five thousand acres for Ogumah County. And I I wasn't aware of that. It was just kind of like, wow. Um because they were talking about a development, I believe it was more north. Think it was north of West Branch somewhere. Um and that one, I think, was four hundred acres. But anyways, it really kind of opened my eyes to like, wow, you know, we could really could start seeing a lot of this around our county. Which I want to see farm fields. Um and I feel very um strongly to the point that, and we all have our own feelings. But this is just another item of the state, just, you know, playing the the big guy, bringing it down on the county and, you know, we need. Stand united on this stuff because what's next? And then what's next? I mean, we're just slowly, everything's getting taken from us. So. I really appreciate what Brenda's doing and and I'm definitely going to be signing that, so.
Go ahead.
Personal, this is my personal opinion, but as I I look at it and I look towards the future. It's almost like the state wants to get rid of local governments entirely and take over everything. You know, and I think this is just the start. And you know what they say, once the camel gets their head under the head under the tent. Next thing you know, the camel's got the whole tent. So I'd say we need to be proactive right now in trying to stop this from happening. And I hope people who are listening would like to have. Petitions also to hand out, to get people to sign them, make sure they're registered voters. Because I have to have these back by May tenth.
Oh, just to. Kick you back onto what you said. Um there's been one individual uh that has came to our zoning meetings, and I don't re- he was, where was he from? Spain, France? I I I don't recall. Anyways, they've and Consumers has went around to uh various. Uh landowners and had them sign leases and 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 money looks enticing, especially when people are struggling right now. Um knowing that our agricultural ordinance does not. Uh uh this is not in our ordinance, so it's not allowed. They've signed leases, lots of people uh have. And this is before the state took this over. It was in the works, but it hadn't passed. So all of this has been going on for the last six months to a year. With them knowing probably that it was going to happen, but it hadn't happened. So that, to me, is even more frightening.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Scott? I I I this resolution to me, I I it's simplified compared to what we got. All of our correspondence last meeting, that I think there was three in there from pretty many counties. Um their language seemed a little bit more aggressive to me. Um I prefer aggressive, but. This is a little.
Going across your house.
Hi, um I I I again, as our plan then to send this to all the other uh uh. Town or uh counties?
It it certainly can be. I can add a second be it resolved that says that we'll do that. And that's not a problem. It's a push of a button.
I I think we need to share this, just like they did with us, so they show that we're we're supporting and we're moving forward this with this as well. Again, I thought this was a little kind, but.
Well, you never know. At some point, we may need the state to help us or something, so I don't want to.
That's exactly, that's exactly like, I I'm I'm not usually in favor of resolutions. Uh to the state. For things because. I don't like to be political, but people at the state level are.
Yes.
And you start, you start telling the governor or the senator who how they're gonna act. Well, someday we might need something. They're gonna look back and say, well, let's see. Who argued with us about everything? Oh, Ogumah sees sends a resolution every time that we do something, they send us a resolution.
Yeah, but we don't know what.
We don't do that.
They're not gonna be enough.
I know, I know. I'd rather be the one that says, oh, Ogumah very seldom sends something.
Come in, Tim, what was the other thing that we sent? What was the other? Was there's only been one other thing that we really took a stance on, and I don't recall what it was, do you?
National Guard.
Oh, the the property up in Gaylord.
Right, 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 yeah.
Okay, yeah. You're you're right. Again, I I think this is pretty important. We need to take a stance on this.
I think it's just, it's like a name on a petition. It's just a name on a. And that's what we're doing. There's eighty-three counties. So they, somebody in the state says, well, we got this local control uh measure here and. A sixty-three out of eighty-three sent a resolution saying no. They don't look at it as an individual thing. If you look at some of those resolutions we see in correspondence. Tuscola County has got something in there almost every month. There's some months that it's just some counties, they just want to protest everything. I don't want to be that county.
So so with that being said, we're clearly not that county.
I'd rather not.
We're a county that's agricultural based. How many acres of our county is is agriculture? I mean, it's a big part of our.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying broadly. All these resolutions, I'm not just saying this one.
Well, I understand.
Because the last one didn't have anything, you know, the National Guard had nothing to do with agriculture. It had to do with just taking. They wanted, they wanted more forested land.
Again, it was more land.
Right, more land that's getting close.
And the other, the other big thing that, the other big thing that's happening in the state right now is is the is the gravel pits. And that's got nothing to do with agriculture, you know, very small. Uh so I I just don't want to be that county that seems to be sending.
Over anything.
I guess, are you guys in for this resolution? Yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
I am.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Next, we got appointment to the open and settlement advisory committee.
We recently had a resignation from the committee. Um as the. Rule has evolved over the last few months, we have a number of participants who are not officially members of the committee, but they're adding an awful lot of value to the conversation. One of those people is. Scott is o- over at the health department. Uh many uh other counties actually have health department representation on their uh advisory committees. We did ask the health department if they had anybody at the initial uh time that we set up the committee. Uh they didn't at that time, but um. Uh Scott has shown up at most of our meetings. I think he missed the last one, and that's the first time I can remember him not being there. Uh he has uh uh given us a lead on a wealth of data that they actually have at the health department that he'll be sharing with us. Uh at future meetings as well. So I I would just suggest if you were agreeable, that he would be a great person to appoint to the committee.
Absolutely. Commissioner, what's it?
Hundred percent. I know uh when we first formatted the committee. Commissioner David was chair and I was co-chair and we had some talks and Commissioner David, with the change of her job and everything, she asked. If I take over doing that, and I said I happily would, but Commissioner David is still very involved. And uh just so you guys know, right now, we're at that point where we are going to start seeing some more action. Uh we'll have our meeting next Thursday. And at that meeting, we're going to give the approval on our assessments. Um and then once we have that approval, then we can really start sending that out to the community. You know, we've got different people that'll be quarterbacking different areas to really start getting some information so we can truly. Find out what we really need and how we can, you know, make the most positive impact with it. So we we'll really start seeing some. Some pretty good movement, you know, starting to hear. Once, once we start getting that that FISA back, we'll be able to start. Doing some, doing some more uh things that'll that'll show some more impact. We're we're excited about that.
Absolutely. So you, do you need to do a resolution for that?
Yeah, I'll put one.
Just for formality, okay. Isabella County M M P proposal.
Uh last made a whole, maybe two made a whole meetings ago, Isabella County was here talking about their proposal on the material management plan. Uh that they are attempting to coordinate with multiple counties. Uh I believe it was like twelve counties that they were um. Hoping to to get on board. Um I did do a little bit of um checking around. There is not another county that's doing this. Right now, as far as coordinating. In fact, I don't know of another county nearby that even has a facility that could process recyclables. Uh like uh Isabella does. I think uh there's a closest one to the north would be Emmett County, Petoskey, and we are just too far. Uh the groups in Saginaw that have done this in the past, it was private sector, and it's looking more and more like they're getting out of that business. It's not particularly profitable, so I'm not really surprised to hear that. Otherwise, there's no other county in our, within our area uh that would make sense to to work with, but no other county. Even doing anything. Uh I am familiar with the Isabella program. It has evolved. Um as they mentioned at their meeting or at our meeting. They received uh over nine hundred thousand dollars in a grant from the state already to update their facility. Uh which tells me there's obviously significant investment that's going there. This is one of those um uh. Projects that's being directed by the state, so I you know, kind of get the feeling that that's. Their choice right now for our region in terms of uh being the processing site. So. I I would suggest if if you were willing that we we go ahead and let Isabella know that we'd be happy to participate. Um remember, there there was uh uh some of those grant funding that we'll get from the state that will stay in this county versus. Going to that regional program, but you know, obviously both are very important uh steps. Uh we have until July to make the decision. I don't foresee any other. Facility coming online or even being proposed between now and then.
Did our legal team give any in input on this?
No.
Because didn't they submit when they were here? Was that last committee of last month?
Yeah.
Didn't they submit a uh contract? They submitted some information or some contract?
Yeah, it was on the iPad, the uh document that says what they submitted. It's just.
Oh, okay.
Not um gonna lock us in stone, you know, if we decide in in, you know. June that there's something better out there. They've given us that out. Again, I don't foresee anything else popping up. Um. It's after the commitment in in July. After that, I think it was July fifth, that state deadline. That's when things start rolling and it would be really rude for where I'm sitting. It'd be very nice to have the expertise. At Isabella helping develop that plan with Ogumah, because we don't have the resources here to do that.
No.
Uh in front of more, we're really, you know, if we wanted to go it alone, we could, but we are so small. There there will be very few opportunities to market anything that we collect. And honestly, I don't think that we really want to set up a whole new program. Uh for such a small area right now. I I just, it would not be cost effective. So I I think this is a very good option for us.
Commissioner Simmons?
I agree with him.
Commissioner Mayhew?
I don't know until I get to the particulars, I don't. But they said they didn't have the trucks to move it or.
There'll be a lot that will, will, once we agree to participate, they'll have to work out those details. This gives them all the responsibility. I mean. Yes, they're gonna make the money off the grants and and whatever comes from the state for this, but this is something we're going to have to do.
Get from here to there.
Right, they're gonna have to work those details out.
Yeah, let's, you got a mountain of trash out there. People ain't gonna be happy.
Right. Commissioner Scott?
Oh, I don't have. Oh, I don't have a problem. I asked him to check with some other counties to see if there is anything um, happening. Uh, this is to fulfill a a state mandated uh, plan. This doesn't have anything to do with trucking, it doesn't have anything to do with collection. Uh, it doesn't have anything to do with what we have to do, what has to be done. Uh, this is just basically a plan, just like the plan was thirty years ago to have a solid waste, solid waste plan for every county. That didn't mean the counties had to pick up their solid waste, it just provides a plan. Bind with that, bind with going with them.
Commissioner Mulsey?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point in time, I appreciate Tim doing the research for looking into the other counties. Um, you know, again, my my thought on this is this possibly more state mandates that eventually are gonna cost the county, you know, possibly uh, could cost counties large amounts of money and that's money we don't have. So I think right now we need to be as proactive and as as aggressive as possible that if we're gonna be tagging up with them right now, we need to make sure that we're consistent with our communication with them. I know when they were here, we asked if we would have a stakeholder involved to make sure that all communications are we have a person from Ogumah County involved and not just giving information back from them and want someone to be a part of this. And I think that's very important. Um, but again, it's just more mandates, that's gonna cost the county a lot of money, how we're gonna pay for it, so we need to do all we can right now to be smart with our decisions and figure out how we're gonna make this work.
The follow-up on Mr. Mulsey's statement, I did get a notice of uh, one of the meetings they're having, it's actually tomorrow at ten thirty on Zoom. Uh, I absolutely intend to be uh, tuned in a- at that point. And that's working with their internal standing committee that they've had at that county for several quite a few years now, but they're opening up a section of that meeting now every month to the regional. I absolutely intend to at least listen in. I don't know that they're gonna have a whole lot to report uh, at this time that would be of interest to us, but I absolutely intend to be.
What time is it?
Ten thirty.
I'd like to say one more thing.
Go ahead.
If we would get to a point where we'd be the possibility of nominating someone, I think someone who's has this experience in their past, it's more in their wheelhouse, is Commissioner Scott.
Yeah.
So if we get to that point and if you'd be willing, I think you'd be the a great candidate to be our, you know, our person in in this.
In this.
I know you're excited about that.
People know what we're talking about. It's to require all Michigan counties to devote new materials to ensure sufficient recycling and composting capacity. That's that's what uh, this is related to. So it's a mandate coming down through the state that Isabella County is is taking the lead on. I I would like our our our, before we a hundred percent agree, I would just like our our legal team to take a look at it. Just to make sure that there's no loopholes, nothing that uh, we can get stuck in that we can't get out of that. February overtime reports.
Okay, um, several pages are included in here. Um, just I do feel obligated to draw your attention, in particular, very first page at the bottom, secondary road patrol overtime, that's actually over budget for the year right now.
Yeah.
Um, they did notify uh, sheriff and undersheriff yesterday that they need to be prepared to tell us how they're gonna fix that. Um, now it is a personnel line, so any changes that have to be made, obviously each change needs to be made. Has to be approved by the board. This is all part of the road patrol milage, so it's a very finite amount of dollars. It's something that would have to come within that fund to cover that. Now, looking at the uh, time sheets when they came in, I suspect, and I don't know, and I wish the sheriff were here to be able to confirm it, but I suspect what happened was the officer that's assigned to secondary road, which is a grant uh, position, was actually filling in for somebody on the the road patrol milage. We have two uh, vacant positions right now, so I suspect that's what was going on. Uh, and if that's the case, then we need to code that difference so that it goes to the C fifty-nine, three oh one rather than the three fifteen. Just a, an accounting thing that we bureaucrats really, you know, had to follow very closely. But it's really important with this one because this is a grant position. And we've been very clear uh, since I've been here that any grant uh, positions, the grant is what's intended to fund them, not additional money from other places, at least not without uh, approval of the board. So that really does need to be addressed. And I would also point out that the road patrol milage overtime is just over half and we're about forty percent of the fiscal year uh, having been reported, so that one's a little bit ahead. Um, you'll notice and and for me, again, looking at the graphs is is a much quicker, gives me a much quicker assessment. Um, we are reporting again, after conversation here, reporting the value of the compensatory time that's earned because we are on the hook to pay that at some point. So you're seeing that calculated in, really see it uh, with the school resource deputies. Uh, and what that's done, I mean, obviously it's way ahead of where overtime was the last few years, but because we added that um, extra component. Which again, I think is very um, very important for you to see because it is a commitment. We may not pay at this pay period, but two or three pay periods down the road, somebody's gonna take time off and we will be realizing a cost at that point. Um, looking down at corrections on page six, um, this one's starting to approach the high from fiscal year twenty twenty-two and certainly ahead of last year's pace. Um, they did suggest that 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 might happen, but uh, the good news is they are within where we would expect them to see at this time of year right now on their overtime. So again, worthy of our attention, but it's checking out right now, at least that one seems to be under control. Uh, the road patrol overtime revenue or expense. Uh, again, I think the reason why you're seeing the fiscal year twenty twenty-four line being above the last few years is because we are reporting comp time in there and it is uh, again fairly significant. And you can see the details on one of the tables uh, in the earlier pages. Uh, but there it is. I mean, that's the the reality of it. Again, it is a little bit ahead of schedule in terms of the expense that we've seen. Um, this is a topic that law enforcement committee will have uh, after this meeting. I just wanted to draw your attention as a board to another folder that's now in the uh, on the iPad that's labeled law enforcement committee. There is a ton of data in there for this meeting and it's not that we're gonna digest all of it, but I'll I'll be walking the committee through it. But a lot of things in there, in particular, uh, the first quarter uh, call reports, all that data that we received from uh, dispatch in terms of what kind of calls we had, what time they were and so on. That's just interesting stuff uh, that you see in there. Uh, it also gives us a very clear picture of where the demand is, you know, what time of day is the demand for our law enforcement. It's very clearly not between uh, three and five o'clock AM. It's that's that's obviously uh, the low point. But this information, what's gonna be very nice for the sheriff is if we're uh, consistently tracked, they can definitely target their shifts for where the peak demand is. Uh, and without having the data, you're really flying blind, so I'm hoping it'll be useful in that way. Um, but you also get a good breakdown of uh, you know, how many uh, traffic issues they deal with, which is pretty significant. It's easily a third of all the activity that they see in any given month. Uh, but you can also see in there, uh, what can be deceiving when you see four thousand dispatches a month. Well, okay, but uh, up to, you know, a third, maybe forty percent of those are what I would call the administrative dispatches and calling in a license plate number or I'm doing a radio test or something like that. They're not urgent needs for law enforcement, but they are necessary and they do add up. So that that does take a pretty big chunk of uh, uh, call volume that they receive from central dispatch. Uh, Jesse Lowell pointed out to me that um, and I I didn't realize this, that uh, uh, our sheriff's office actually gets calls on the phone that really should go to nine one one. And so when somebody calls the sheriff's office for whatever the purpose is, they don't see that in the nine one one data. So there may be some additional calls in there that we don't see on the data because they didn't go through central dispatch. My guess is those are probably a small fraction, uh, probably one, two, three percent, but it's there. So it's it's worth uh, pointing that out.
Why did you put time sheets on here, like some time sheets on here?
The time sheets you see are the notes uh, for the overtime. And there have been discussion at law enforcement committee about why are we getting overtime? And so these sheets are what's telling us. A lot of cases, uh, there there might have been an accident that they were held over on or uh, they were covering a shift, particularly at corrections, covering a shift for somebody who had to come in late. But you've got that detail, so you can see what some of the reasoning is.
So do they go in and put this information and so they don't, still not using time clocks, correct?
Still not using time clocks. Uh, the way it was explained, the the undersheriff told us at the last meeting or two meetings ago with law enforcement, is anytime there's overtime, they have a standing uh, order to enter the reason why into the no overtime system. That's what we capture it. Um, they also know that the the logs that each deputy keeps will have way more detail. I'm a little bit leery about uh, grabbing those because there's probably things in there that really aren't intended for, you know, general knowledge, uh, you know, things that they're dealing with in the field. Uh, but if we did need to have, if we had question about why was overtime needed on, you know, March second and the detail that we see on the time sheet maybe is is fuzzy, we can ask for that that log and maybe try to detail it if we need it, but it's just general information that doesn't need to be circulating uh, for the most part because it's law enforcement, you know, issues that are documented there.
Questions? You guys have a meeting after this, correct, today?
Yeah, we do, we do.
Yeah. I think if you take a look at, and this is what I I hope the budget committee's really gonna dive into is costs. You look at, you look at that graph on page five there with road patrol overtime, that blue line on the bottom is two thousand twenty-one. Okay, that's before we really dove in, got got road patrol milage. And they were just operating with sheriff's sheriff's department. When when that road patrol milage passed, the commission at that time added it to, added it to what the sheriff was getting. Basically, this sheriff here doubled, doubled his his budget from the previous sheriff. And what happened? What what's what's the direct reflection? Overtime went sky high every year. Matter of fact, the blue line started to take off in the late last part of the year. Why? You might say, did, when did it pa- when did it pass? Well, it passed in the middle of the year at the primary. Even though the money wasn't coming in, the overtime started going up. And then every year after that, up and up and up. And then months that nine one one tells us that are slow, their overtime's high, December. And then comp time, that's not paid out as overtime. But when you look at those comp hours there, that's time off paid that they don't have to take vacation pay for. They still got vacation pay.
That means they accumulate their vacation pay at the end when they leave, we have to pay them out.
Well, no, no, not not vacation. Right, not vacation, that's sick. That's Teamster sick pay. But it doesn't accumulate, does it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a
It does, yes.
For this group, it's PTO, so it's all your vacations, their personal, everything lumped into one. And yes, there is a percentage, uh, when you leave employment, there's a percentage.
Well, the other thing is, is if you're a school resource officer and you're getting comp time for every snow day, every in-service day, every, every vacation time that the school takes off, you get to summer, you got a whole month, month and a half of vacation time you can take. So
That doesn't count against your vacation.
That's right. So I kinda, it makes me wonder, what is the priority? To have a cop on the street? We could pay that man.
You need a break?
Overtime. We could pay him overtime, we don't have to pay him comp time. He has to ask for admission to get comp time, according to contract.
Well, I think you guys having these meetings, um, I think seeing all this information, how it's broke down, much, much more clear um, is a start. I think we're headed in the right direction. Um, obviously, we're over um, in one line item. Uh, at this point in time, as far as overtime, they're gonna have to come up with where that money can come from or that position's cut. There's no funding for it. It's it's kinda cut and dry. So, um, uh, it is what it is. Well, it'll have to be figured out. But I think we need to continue with this and and continue to monitor it. Correct?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, one
It's in their hands to manage this.
Yeah.
If the money's not there, the money's not there. I mean, it's
We get a new budget, we knew the importance of these consistent meetings with law enforcement. As you guys can see there on the agenda, you know, we're taking this very seriously. We need to look at every single item. We have two huge budget items here, the sheriff department and the jail. And we need to continue to work hard, we need to be accountable with how we're moving forward to try to save these types of money. And we have to look at every single option of every, these two, these two divisions are big money items and we need to look at everything possible to try to save the county money. Yet be able, I'm a big supporter of law enforcement, yet be able to sustain a reasonable
Service.
Level of service for the county, but in the end, have that reasonable level of service and do the best we possibly can, but create financial sustainability for the county. These are two big, big items and we're gonna continue to work, work hard to get to the sought, figured out.
You guys have put the minutes from the meeting uh, and the uh, in the board folder, right?
Right.
I found that very uh, useful. Uh, gee, personnel manual.
Um, we, I've said on with the personnel committee, it's been several months ago now when we last looked at the manual. Um, we are coming into uh, you know, a time where we've got to start the bargaining process with our unions. It'd be very nice if we could get the manual finalized or at least it's very close to it, uh, prior to the time we start bargaining. The current manual is it is twenty-three years old now. Uh, it has um, just some some outdated things that we don't do anymore that are in it. But unfortunately, when questions come up, we're bound by that because it is the policy, as it were. Now, uh, Commissioner David, you may remember, I I don't think there was a whole lot more that we had to go over on that. I mean, there were, there were a few things, changes that we made to the draft. Um, if you were agreeable, um, we can put this, I I get it out to the board like today, get that draft out and then maybe be ready to talk about that at the next committee hole as the committee the whole. Uh, or we could do another committee meeting again, if you
It's been a a a period of time since we had a committee meeting. I would like to have a committee meeting first and then give it, distribute it and go from there. What's the timeframe? When did you want this out by?
I just, um, you know, we start, both start bargaining probably midsummer, so if we could get it done by then, I think that would be helpful.
Cause I know Commissioner Simmons was, had quite a few ideas and thoughts.
Okay.
So, okay.
All right, we'll get that together.
Perfect. Item six, public comment. Public comment on the back there. Oh, come on up, sir. Did you? Come on up, you gotta come up.
I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure if this pertains to
This is public comment for anything?
Line six or whatever.
You got three minutes.
Johnny, Tom, Tom, Tom mentioned about the integration of that GPS system for the the sheriff department, the police department and the EMS. Some fantastic idea. They need to know where they're at, that'd be great. Um, does this system also, can it be included in our fire? Um, I I witnessed a a very tragic accident on a state road here just last Friday to the two of our, two of our uh, community members out. Um, the tree was very close to the road, they struck the tree. I seen the police come and it was a while later, the EMS showed up and then the fire department. Having these, all these services integrated only, almost kinda makes sense. Um, does the fire department have that option as well as, I mean, it just seems like they run hand in hand.
If they wanted to have their units viewable to dispatch on the map, yes, they could purchase the same equipment that EMS does. I don't know financially, this is my opinion as a, as a, as a fire department member, that funding. You're talking about a thousand dollars for the modem that goes into the vehicle plus a monthly cellular service subscription, plus the GPS data. Yes, they could, if they wanted their units visible on the map at dispatch, they could.
Isn't there a monthly fire chief meeting?
I believe so.
Or is that something that that I would recommend you taking, taking there?
Yeah, I just got this.
No, yep, absolutely. And Commissioner Simmons wanted me to let you know that she will get with you later, whatever that may mean. She just texted to him, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on, sir. Any public comment on the phone?
I have a quick question in regards to the solar.
And you are, come on up, sir.
In regards to the solar, does that change your property class from agricultural or commercial if they were to put all these solar panels on your property?
It's currently not in our agricultural ordinance, so that answer, I don't know. I'm on the zoning, Dan may, oh, I think Um, I believe it's correct. I don't think Um, I believe it's correct. I don't think it will change the overall agricultural land, but it will take a permit. Um, but again, raise it right now. It is not in our ordinance, agricultural. That wasn't a clear answer, was it?
Yeah.
Any other? Go ahead.
Um, kind of calling somebody out here because I want to introduce him because it's someone who's come to the area and he's bringing possibility of homes and. And that is, uh, Tommy Dol.
Yes, come on up, sir. He was at our, he was at our zoning meeting.
Uh, Tommy Dol with Infinity Sports, uh, working on a sports complex outside of, um, Meyer. Um, we brought it for special use last week, last week.
Yeah, our zoning meeting.
Yep, um, we're going to site plan next month and continue on that path. Um, it's about a hundred million dollar project. It's going to be fairly large, but it'll sit on the south side of Meyer, a hundred and sixteen acres. With it'll bring, uh, housing, infrastructure to, uh, fiber internet. Is one thing that we're really focused on because connectivity is really important. In twenty twenty-four, was with Penny Pay yesterday, trying to get connectivity out to the transit building, figuring out plan to get that out soon and pretty quickly.
Perfect. Nice meeting you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Have a good day.
You too, sir. Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned at nine fifty-one. That was way faster than I anticipated. There was a lot on there.